In order, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
David, would you do a roll call, please?
Mayor Brian Cohn?
Here.
Alderman Jamie Donalds?
Here.
Alderman Patrick Fahy?
Yes.
Alderman Bob Donovan?
Here.
Alderman Jeff Heidman?
Here.
Alderman Mike Rainey?
Here.
Alderman Joe Prince?
Here.
Alderman Joe Steiger?
Here.
Missed one.
Two and nine minutes.
Right next to him.
Oh, Bennett.
Oh, I already crossed him out. Sorry.
Oh, Eric Bennett.
Okay. We have a cool.
Awesome. Thank you. Move for approval of tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't believe we have any presentations or personal appearances, so we'll skip to the city administrator's report.
You have an agenda to report at your seats. Item number two, start off with that. I need a board member to volunteer to help with choosing a website developer for the city hall. It could be for city government, not for visitors, the website for visitstgen.com. We already did that. Getting a small committee together to review the RFQ submittals. They're due tomorrow at 5:00. And then we'll have a committee meeting either next week or the week after, but give everybody a chance to look at those submittals. So I'm hoping there's one person that'll volunteer to...
Do you need a nomination, or are you going to wait for him to speak up?
I don't, I think he was just worried that somebody else was going to jump at that chance and didn't want to take that away from someone.
So do you need a nomination, or?
No, I just need somebody to volunteer to do it.
Happy I'd like to volunteer for that.
Okay.
Thank you for stepping up.
You're drafted. Concrete work will begin Monday on the trail of our Pinewood Park. All of it's been dug out. Alliance has done their part. And I think you said, Cochran was out there today?
Yeah, they've got the pass taken.
Staked off. Okay, so it's ready to get started. Should be done by the end of the week. They didn't think it would take very long to put it in, but it just depends on what they might bump into. Item six, we've had a lot of water customers come in. David Woods has been helping a lot of people with their bills this month. Usually we do turn offs like the first week of the month, but we waited. However, that is, one does not have anything to do with the other. The bills did not get delivered completely. The post office is aware, it's up in Hazelwood, that they did not get distributed correctly and then back to St. Genevieve to get to people's mailboxes. So if they will call us, if they will come by, we'd be happy to tell them what their amount is because the bills are due Monday. So we want to get everybody paid that needs to pay. We've had a lot of people that just said, I haven't seen a bill. What happened? Well, that's what happened.
So does that mean they're not coming in the mail at all, or they'll show up when they're?
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, it could be, could be both. I mean, we've had one person on staff that received their bill, and she was about to pay it, but it was June's bill, not July's. And so I think it's just whatever is getting mixed up in the system. We have Front Desk, which people can sign up for and get an email on what the cost is for the water bill. They have that option if they want to sign up for it. You don't have to sign up to pay through Front Desk, but it will send out an email for their bill. If you want to take, you know, get rid of the bill card that you received.
Did we push that out through the text alert system as well?
I didn't do text alert. I didn't know if that was something you wanted to...
I don't know. That might not be the worst idea. Because I saw we posted on Facebook.
Yeah.
I think that's why we have it. Might as well. What do you guys think?
Yeah.
Just in case.
So we have 91 people signed up for it. That's why it's more about smaller, but...
Well, they signed up for it for a reason, so I think...
Okay. Yeah, I mean, we'll do that in the morning.
Okay.
But not too early. Any other questions on my report?
Happy, first item, remind me of the timeframe of that whole sidewalk thing and on item one?
Oh, for?
The sidewalk.
So this is the, this is the one for South Forest Street.
Right.
So it's going to be about a three-year process. We'll do the engineering. It will probably take, if we can get it done in two years, we can try, but that's what might not like for us to be able to do. But generally, they've been extended to three years to get them completed. You're working on engineering, surveying and engineering probably the first year, year and a half, and then working through the process to get a contractor and then get that set up. I mean, we're still working on the sidewalk on St. Marius Road. And we haven't even gotten to the point yet where we talk to the neighbors about easements, temporary construction easements. So that shows you how the process can be extended out. So at this point, we are going through their on-call list of engineers. We're talking to three different engineering companies to see if there's any options. It's a requirement from MoDOT. And then we'll choose one and move on with that company.
Is there another question on this side?
Update on the plug gates?
It never got to the point we needed to close them. So the predictions were, it's going to be up to 36 feet. We're going to be in trouble, blah, blah, blah. So the first wave got up to about 34. We still didn't need to close the south gate. North gates were never an issue. And then we looked at the forecast over the last week or so. It started climbing up to around 35 feet, but they kept amending it and it never, never achieved it. I think it's at 34.7 now is what the max is tomorrow at 1:00. So there was never any need to actually close them. I thought we were heading that way because there was a lot of rain from Tuesday, but it never, never got that high, so we didn't have to worry. Anything else?
Thank you. Happy. Along the staff reports, first up tonight is Chief Steiger.
Good evening, everyone. You should have a copy of my report. Probably the biggest thing to report is we did lose another firefighter, but his attendance had been less than stellar and he was fixing to go on probation. So it wasn't really a surprise. We did just finish our annual certifications for ladder testing, pump testing, and SCBA's. Basically, what that does is show that all of our equipment is certified, so if somebody would be hurt, the city has covered all their bases by having everything certified. And I do have a couple items in front of you guys tonight, requesting permission to purchase off the ARPA grant. I have three sets of items there. I have the hose roll management system, which basically rolls holes so the guys don't have to bend over and lift heavy things. And then we also have the turnout gear. And then after we figure all that out, I'll figure out how much money I have left to work on the hose replacement. Then we'll come back probably next month with request to purchase the hose. Be open to any questions?
You said that roll system, what actually is that?
It's basically a battery-operated motor system on like a little dolly. And you clamp the coupling on the hose once you've laid it out, clamp the hose coupling, pull the little battery-operated trigger, and it rolls it up for you. So whenever you get 100-foot section rolled up, you take it off that, put it on a different cart, roll it to the back of the truck, and it's got a set of rollers. So instead of having to pick things up and move them around and carry and bend over rolling, it does that for you. And then when you get it on the second cart, you bring it to the back of the truck, and all you have to do is stand on the truck and pull it back up and load it, and it unrolls easily. So there's a lot less drain, a lot less chance of back injuries.
Drains it too and?
Yeah, it'll drain it as you go.
Any other questions, comments for Chief Steiger?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And next up will be our tourism director, Aaron Smith.
Evening, everyone. I wanted to start by showing you guys the video that I put together for the French Heritage Festival. Life is like when the country was just beginning. Our story. You can feel the spirit in the people, but what gives it life? Here in St. Genevieve, we've guarded the artifacts and architecture from our communities' early days. Our roots are undeniably French, reflected in our Normandy-inspired vertical timbers and trusses. We love sharing this history. It connects visitors to their own past, enjoying what life is like when the country was just beginning. Our story continues through our dedication to one thing, community. At the French Heritage Festival, you're not just a spectator. You join a community with roots dating back to the earliest settlers. You become part of a celebration that breathes life into our streets and our history. Witness the spark that has endured for generations. Join us at the French Heritage Festival in St. Genevieve, where history and heritage come alive. Yeah, you can cut it now. Just the credits rolling. So yeah, I'm pretty proud of that. Like I was telling Alderman Fahy last time, you know, this type of thing, writing scripts, directing videos, is kind of my specialty. I think a major part of this position is being able to be a creative director. I would like to have a bigger budget to create some more videos next year. It's the kind of output that you'll get. And I'm using a young videographer from St. Louis. It's quite affordable and very good at what he does. Feedback from town on this is, you know, it's a new level of professionalism. Narration is compelling, makes you want to attend the festival. Have to use this momentum to make the festival better moving forward, and then we need more videos to show off our other assets. I've had a number of new grant opportunities emerge. I've reconnected with Missouri Main Street Connection. We'll bring a group of business owners down to their grant workshop on August 21st. They give a community empowerment grant, and it's used to help kind of revitalize the downtown, putting up facades and signage and things like that. And I think that's something that we should look at. It's kind of sorely needed. I have a grant writer friend that I've been talking with. He and myself and David Bova will sit down with him later this month. We'll talk about establishing like a federal grant infrastructure for the town. We have so many historic, you know, buildings and things like that, that we definitely qualify for some national grants. And then talking about kind of helping us pick a grant writer in state that can help us take advantage of some of these local grants as well. And speaking of that, T-Mobile has a grant for rural communities. They offer $50,000 as like an in-kind. Well, they will match up to $50,000 for something. We're looking at applying that to the Ferry Landing project, which I think is quite cool. So definitely think a grant writer should be in our future because it would definitely help, help supplement some of our budget. The MMG and the MPD were approved for this year, so the MPD was earmarked for us to go through the rebranding process. Right now, we're accepting RFQs. So McDaniels will be submitting one, and I'm going to be meeting with another group out of another agency out of St. Louis called Black Top Sailor next Thursday to just go over our options. I think it's our, you know, we've got to get this branding right. I mean, this, you know, this shouldn't be a thing that we have to turn around five years from now and redo. This should be for the next 20 years. So I want to get this right, so I'm going to do my due diligence and meet with as many groups as I can find.
What's the name of the group you're meeting with?
Black Top Sailor. Yeah.
That's their branding?
That's their branding. Yeah, yeah, for sure. But yeah, it's interesting, but they've got some good ideas, so I'm going to hear them out. We unlocked Facebook monetization, so our Facebook posts are doing so well and they're so engaging that Facebook will now pay us for our advertisement, which is great. So even the stuff that we spend to boost, they will actually pay us back and we'll receive checks. Downtown St. Jen does that right now, and so they say it works. So I'm going to go for it. And other apps like YouTube and Instagram also allow monetization, so that's one of the things to look forward to. That's one of the great byproducts of using social media. And then I received an advertisement excellence award from Baxter Research. They rate ad effectiveness for Missouri Life Magazine and other print publications. The ad was for summer attractions. You can see it in the back. Not a huge award, but it's great to hear feedback on ad effectiveness.
What was the ad?
It was in the back here. Yeah. Any questions?
To your point, Alderman Fahy, that group comes pretty highly recommended. They're kind of a new startup, the advertising group that Aaron is going to meet with for the RFQ for the branding.
Yeah, they're kind of, they've all worked for really big marketing firms, and they've splintered off and created their own group, so.
Kind of interesting to second. And the downtown St. Jen group is getting checks for hundreds of dollars for their advertising and their monetization of their Facebook and Instagram thing. So it's, as opposed to, you know, spending hundreds of dollars, thousands of dollars, they're actually getting paid back. So that's kind of, kind of interesting to see that. And then I don't know if you want to talk about this morning?
Oh, yes. So we've got the county commissioners to commit to putting the bed tax on the November ballot.
Myself and Aaron and one other business owner here that's got city and county businesses, met with them. They were very approachable and agreeable. They kind of think that they all felt like it needed to be done. So they're going to talk to their county attorney. We're going to give them some language. We might need Mr. Bishop's help. Might need some language to institute that. Then certain attorney, I can't remember their county attorney's name.
I'm sure.
So make sure that he blesses it, and then Hafsu will put it on for the August.
November.
Or November, I'm sorry, November ballot. August 27th, I think, is the deadline for the November ballot. But they were a very, one of the biggest things, and I'll just bring this up while we're talking about that. I'm sorry to take too much time, but Perryville County as a whole is assessing a 6% sales tax for their transient tax across the county wide. So if you're staying overnight in Perry County, anywhere there, you're getting an additional 6% tax for a stay there in Perry County.
Do you know what it was previously?
I don't know what they started out. I mean, it truly started out just like a lot of places at 1%, but now it's up to 6% countywide in Perry County.
How will that affect our current city tax that is already in place? So are they going to be paying on top of that?
No.
No, they're separate. They're not stacked.
Okay.
Yeah. So that would be separate. And the county one has to start out at 1% for those guys.
Yeah, I think it's pretty interesting with Perry County collecting 6%. Obviously, they had to move up to that, but apparently people in the county, I don't think, you know, Perry County is that different than St. Jen, so they must have thought it was worth it to, you know, to have that 6% transient tax to collect that, you know. They thought, I think they have a, I just met Trish Ursfeld from Perry County. She's their tourism director, and she's been there for nine years, and I think they really trust her and her vision, so they, you know, I think she's been doing great.
If you look at their budget and what they spend their money on with social media, print, radio, billboard, things like that, what they spent on for their Eclipse promotion for their marketing for that, they're killing us with what their budget looks like, their staff looks like, and their tools that they're using to get the message out. But nothing against Perry County, but I think we have so much more to offer than what Perry County has as a whole. And so that's one of the tools they're using is that lodging tax to fund all of this marketing that they're doing. And they're beating us right now. So there's another topic in the work session, so I won't take up too much of your time on it now, but while Aaron was up here.
All right. Aaron, in seven months, you've been here and you've done a remarkable job. My worry is you've got an awful lot on your plate, and this grant writing is so important that for you to take that on and everything else you're doing, something's going to fall off the plate. And I think it's incumbent on us to figure out how we can get help. This grant writing pays for itself once you get the rights to doing it. And I think I'm asking you too much to do that and everything else.
Well, I think, you know, what I'm, you know, I'm going to be transparent. What I'm trying to do is set up for my budget pitch coming up. But yeah, no, I think I want to, you know, just show what's, what's being left on the table right now, you know. We have, you know, I think David Bova is going to help us with the grant writing for the Ferry Landing project for that. If we deem, it's got to be a shovel-ready project, so we want to see how shovel-ready we are. But even, you know, getting the funds to get things shovel-ready around here and, you know, that's all another, another thing. So yeah, no, I definitely would like to pitch for you guys to look out to, you know, help retain a grant writer at least. But I have someone, like I said, my good friend, he's, he's from Battleboro, Vermont, and they just won Best Small Town in America. And he's, he's their sustainability coordinator, but he's been writing grants for a long time. He helped me with my nonprofit out in California. And so he knows the ropes of, you know, what it takes to kind of build that infrastructure because we need, we need that infrastructure moving forward, especially with, with the kind of national grants that we could qualify for. I mean, it would really help supplement our budget and bring more beauty to the town, bring more preservation to the town, so, yeah, so. Anything else?
Thank you, Aaron. Right. This time we'll open up public comments. Okay, no public comment. We will move to tonight's consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? The only item, we have no old business to discuss, so we have one item of new business, and this is what we discussed at the previous meeting. This would be changing our regular Alderman meeting and work session from Thursday, July 25th to Wednesday, July 24th. That would be at 6:00 PM still.
Do you need a?
No, we need a motion.
Yeah. Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then last item, okay, so that was none. Last item then, we have a resolution 2024-33. This is a resolution appointing Justin Donovan to the Planning and Zoning Board.
Reappoint, right?
Reappoint. Yes, he was, he was already serving on service. Correct.
I move to approve. Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then while we're, we're talking, just to jump back to the meeting on the, so moving the meeting to the 24th with the community town, or the local government town hall on the 25th, was everybody going to be able to make it? Or is, who is going to be able to make it to that?
The meeting or?
No, the government town hall.
The government town hall meeting at 6:00?
It does start at 6:00, yes.
I'm going to be there.
We just need to make sure, we have to post it. So we have four. Okay, so we have three there, Joe.
We take a team bus out there and?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, we'll have tracksuits for everybody. It still looks like we have five, so we probably should, we'll need to post it, I guess, as a regular meeting. Okay, great. Any other business to discuss at this time? Okay, with that, we will adjourn. Work session to order, and we will move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Move to amend the agenda to add other business prior to the standard items.
Okay. I have a motion to amend tonight's agenda. We're going to add Dr. Hoffman here before we get to items one, two, and three. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great.
I invite Dr. Hoffman here, so just kind of give an update on what she's doing around Main Street. Dr. Hoffman's a practitioner here in St. Genevieve, but she's also a business owner. Besides her everyday working as a doctor, she's got some business endeavor, so I just want, she probably got an update on what's going on.
Great. Well, some people may know me from the Point Based Clinic, where I do a rheumatology clinic and have for quite a few years now. But for a year now, I've also owned the Dr. Herdic House, Airbnb and rehabbed it. That's going very well. And we're about to finish with the very last room that we are, and have a grand opening on that one. But I also bought the house next door that was La Techniques. And this was originally a German bakery in 1848, and the front part of it is brick, and that is going to be turned into an art gallery. And I already have one artist who has agreed to sell his works there, and that is somebody you may know, Dr. Brian Haynes. He has a gallery of his own in Washington, Missouri, but he likes this area. He wants to support the history that it has with the art colony. And so he, when I asked him, was willing to contribute. And I'm probably going to have two of my four rooms there with his work. I'm looking for people for the other two rooms. I'm going to approach Carol Vorst to see if she would be willing. And also, there might be some other people from the previous colony that I can find some information about. And then I was going to have my fourth and final room be local people who want to, want to show their work. So that was the distribution I'm planning to have. I would like to get it ready for opening October or November. We'll see because La Techniques is still there. I can't really move in until they move out, but they, but they will, and we're going to rehab it. I have people lined up to rehab it. And the back part of it, I would like to turn into an entertainment venue where we can have parties, weddings, other things. I'm going to keep it with a very historic look, because that's essential in that neighborhood. Although we will probably have some things that are a little more modern underneath the surface as far as services. I am planning to put a Patriot Sun Room on the back of the building. It will not show from the street, but it would give us a much larger space to have people sitting down. I do plan it, plan for the front part to be the Two Rivers Art Gallery. We bring, obviously, to the Mississippi and the Missouri. And the back part, I was going to make the French Sisters Wine Bar and Cafe. And French Sisters being three cities, basically, New Orleans, St. Louis, and St. Genevieve. And with the idea of having food from north and south of us served there. We're going to have a food truck, as long as we get permission from you guys, of course, and also attend some other events in the area. So I think this will add to the community in a very, in a meaningful way. And we're going to keep, I want to reassure you that... Um, and we're gonna keep, I want to reassure you that all that we want to keep the historic nature of it intact. You've probably seen the mural that I just sponsored that is going up now, uh, on, uh, Miss Conlon's building, uh, as an entrance to, um, the Little Bohemia area. And that's the kind of, uh, flavor we want to have, something that complements the community, has good taste, and, uh, also, uh, you know, maintains a historic flavor. So I will be hoping to come before the Heritage Board in early August, when I have drawings from the people who are involved to show what we're going to be doing, to get our approval before we move ahead. But I'm planning to move ahead pretty quickly with the intention of opening the art gallery in October or November and probably opening the event center in the spring, uh, because it's gonna take us that long. Uh, if there are any questions or input, I greatly appreciate it, and I'm happy to be part of the community.
Wonderful.
Anything?
It sounds wonderful. Very excited.
Good, good. Okay, we'll keep it posted, and we'll be certainly looking for, uh, the next stages and, and the approval stage.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thanks for letting me plug in there, man.
No, absolutely. That was a wonderful update. Okay, that, uh, we will move to, um, work session agenda item number one, and this is a, a discussion on stop signs at the intersection of Main and Washington.
The Auto Woman Dobbs contacted me about that. I think she'd been contacted by some of the businesses downtown about, uh, making it a four-way stop at Washington and Main instead of just a two-way stop. So checked with the police chief, and he said he's, there's not, there hasn't been a lot of accidents, so it's not something that we would look at doing because there was an accident issue. Uh, but try to, you know, try to take care of something ahead of time, because there is some site limitations at that intersection, uh, when you're coming off of Washington on the Main Street going east, I'm sorry, going west. And I found out we already have, we already have the ordinance for it in place. So at one time, I know they tested it, put the signs out, but then it never, it, whatever happened, whatever happened, it fell through. They didn't complete it. We have a post already there that's on site. We can put another post in fairly easily. We can do it temporarily with just barricades with stop signs on them, uh, just to get people used to it. And, you know, you want to give people a, a bit of time anyway to, to get used to it before you start writing tickets. But, uh, yes, sir. You, you have a question, face, I can tell.
We've visited this several times, uh, in the last few years that I've been on the board, and the last time we were going to go ahead with it, um, it was determined that due to the site distances and, I guess, our own ordinances, a couple of the businesses would be losing a parking spot in front of each of the places on all four corners, and they didn't want to give up their parking, uh, because you have, you can't park that close to a stop sign. So that was kind of taken back away, and we didn't do it. Um, and then it was revisited another time or two, and they wanted to go ahead with it, and so we brought up the parking spots again. And, I mean, in order to be, enforce our own ordinances, there are going to be parking spots that are going to be lost, so. I mean, if they're really still wanting to do that, I mean, I don't have an opinion on that at all, because when you drive through there anyways, most people already stopped there, especially if they're out of town, because they just stopped at the previous two, they think that they have to stop there anyways, so. I don't, I don't have an objection to it except for it was turned down before because they didn't want to lose their parking spots.
Because there's a 15-foot requirement from the intersection with a stop sign.
I've never been, uh, in favor of more stop signs, but I'd really like to refer to those businesses around there and, and hear their opinions and stuff and?
But we got a lot of activity down there than years past, too. There's a lot of foot traffic, so, I mean, it's?
I'd want to value their opinion of the parking spots and how it affects them and stuff a lot.
Well, owning a business on one of the corners that would be involved, uh, the tourists may stop and look even though there's a stop sign there. The locals are going as fast as they can after they get by Jefferson Street to get to the Little League game on time. Even though it's a 20 mile an hour speed limit in there, people are regularly inferring excess of that. And as you know, that, especially on the 100 block of Main Street, there is, people are parking on both sides. It's almost a one-lane street, uh, in the course of the day with parking on both sides, on how people are going that fast on a one-lane street. Uh, I think that, uh, on a safety standpoint, it's just a matter of time before something happens on the, in the 200 block from that.
Well, and I said, and what Patrick, but he says, um, when you're sitting on, at the corner of Washington and Main right there, you can't, at St. Louis, when someone's parked all the way up there directly in front of St. Louis, you cannot see what's coming. You have to pull out into the road in the intersection to see if there's something coming right there. So it, it is a problem. It's getting busier down there, and that's why a lot of the people came to me and asked me if we could go through with this.
Was it any of the folks that were, that own businesses down there?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so that, that's where that, some of that information came from, why we wanted to bring it to the board.
Yeah.
So it's more or less one parking spot all the way around?
Well, no, there's already no parking on the two streets, because they already have stops.
Yeah, it's just two more.
Two spots.
Yeah. So it'd be on the southbound, northbound.
St. Louis would definitely be losing a spot. But they can go around the corner. They do park around the corner.
Sure.
Have you heard from them?
No, I have not, so.
I, I would be losing a spot, all right?
Yeah.
Offered up for the cost.
Do you want to do a temporary one for a month, see how it goes?
Not if I send out, uh, letters to the adjoining business owners, say we're going to do this, and then, you know, give it a couple weeks, and then put the temporary signs out, and then see how it goes.
I think that's a good idea. Want to meet the people's end.
Okay.
Sounds like a point.
It's like a rage track, man. Seriously, they come off that bridge, man, they're cooking it.
Okay, we will move on to work session item number two. This is, so these are kind of, um, put, they're kind of combined in your, in your paperwork there, but, uh, number two, to address it specifically, is, um, there's a, a request to drop the Tourism Advisory Council and more or less add an ad hoc non-voting members, um, to our, our current TTC, our Tourism Tax Commission.
The TAC's job mostly was just recommendations, talk to them about what we're, what our budget is for advertising, and then what the ideas were that we were going to be doing for advertising. We now have a marketing plan, so I think the need for the TAC is less. For TTC, we have to utilize that group to allocate funds that would be used for the marketing plan and for other advertising and marketing needs, uh, because that is earmarked for tourism, and they have to allocate those funds. The board will allocate, uh, will approve an overall budget, but TTC is, is ultimately responsible for what they, what we end up spending.
Are they restricted as to how many voting members they can have?
Five. State statute limits it to five individuals with, uh, certain areas of expertise that they're, that you have to find. So it's hotel motel, or it's gonna be a local business, or it's gonna be a business of tourism. So then what you have, though, is it would keep the county a chamber as part of the, the TTC, they can be there to at least give some input. So it wouldn't be just them making, they would make all the decisions, but they'd have input from others in the community. Uh, so that was our, our recommendation after doing this. We, we combined the groups to, to cut down the amount of repetitiveness, repeating our, what we're doing for tourism. Uh, but to, but to combine groups, just, they're not functioning real well. And we are utilizing the funds from, from the tourism tax, so we want to be able to continue to do that and have a bigger pool for those that we get people on the TTC. We can take anybody from the county for TTC. So it's allowed to, we're allowed to do that, even though there's not a tourism tax in the county, we can still pull people from that. Uh, but just trying to find the people to do that and TAC, uh, we're, we're diluting the pool too much.
Happy as far as, um, you know, dissolving or combining, you know, the two entities, I don't see any issue whether they think best. Uh, my only problem is the timing of this on the November ballot. I'm afraid.
Hold on, we're skipping ahead on that, I think, right?
What's all in the scene?
Well, let's, let's limit this to just the Tourism Tax Commission, TAC, for, for the moment, because we haven't really announced that next, or the next agenda item. So let's address them individually, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Okay.
So the question is, do you think the TAC serves a purpose, or should we go ahead and look at eliminating? Because it'll be the board that has to pass a, either an ordinance or resolution, I'm not sure which, probably an ordinance, uh, to eliminate TT, TAC, because it's in the bylaws, but it's the board that makes that decision.
Well, the current structure of the tax commission, do they allow open comments at a meeting, or is it?
It's structured the same way as any other board or commission.
So anybody that had any input would be allowed to go anyways?
Yeah. Okay. And there are five appointed members of that who are voting.
Right.
And then the TPC?
TAC.
TAC would have appointed seats but non-voting? Or would it just be ad hoc? Right. So what you wouldn't have is TAC, you would have, and both boards have always had, the Board of Alderman appoint them. So what you have, you still have that, that responsibility to appoint the non-voting members from the TTC.
TPC.
TC.
TAC.
TTC is Tourism Tax Commission.
It's always made it tough, right? So I, I sit on there as a, as a board liaison. I, I have mixed emotions about it. Um, it, it does make it function hard the way it is structured now. Um, it is hard to find enough, um, volunteers to sit on those two different, um, committees. It, it, but it, and it will slightly hinder some voting input. Now, I'll have, they'll be able to speak up and give their general comments, but when, when we dissolve the TAC, um, the TTC will just have five voting members, and they'll be at or ad hoc, the, um, Karen Stupi comes down, uh, very regularly to sit in on all the meetings, uh, myself as the, uh, as a board, Dina from the Chamber of Commerce. So you'll have five plus those three at least ad hoc members not voting there at those meetings with Aaron, um, and going through those. Um, in the past, other than the items that strictly were funding issues from that state grant for the TTC, that's what they, they voted on, those five members. And then when you went into larger items or non, um, tax items, then the TAC kind of, we set the agenda to kind of talk about those, and some of those other members were voting members of that. So it's gonna clean things up, it's gonna make it easier to staff and volunteer and get members on there. And the other ad hoc, the new ad hoc members will be able to give their input, they just won't be able to vote, and so it'll be just those five members that'll vote on all things inside of the, now the, just the TTC. So there's good and bad to both. I don't know how you fix it, because the TTC has to exist, exist by state statute, and you can't add voting members, and we're not having, you know, so it, it, it does make it hard. It, there, I've been around this for 12-something, 15-something years, and I, it's always been cumbersome, and there is no good way to clean it up, so.
What's Aaron's role?
Aaron is the tourism director, and so he's a, he, he's technically not a member of the TTC, but he runs the meetings.
He, he technically is, is the same job that I do for the Board of Alderman. He's there as staff and for advisory. They're supposed to run their own meetings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's, there's a president and a?
Who is, who is the president?
Laura Oliver.
Laura Oliver.
This was, um, Jim Ferguson was the, uh, vice chairman, uh, I'm sorry, she was the chairmanship, not, and then, um, vice chair, not president, but same difference. And then, um, we went up, we did away, because, because we had a staff member there, we used to have secretary and a trader, and I'm going with them, um, as officers of that committee. So, um, this is probably the lesser of two evils, I think, would be my recommendation, too.
I can tell you, it's been a revolving door with appointments within, honestly, both, but I think?
We had a couple of people move away, we had a couple of people resign because their businesses changed, we've had, uh, and it was just?
Time constraints, I mean, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of reasons, but I think this will help keeping us at full capacity on the TTC.
That budget is, for a long time, was 15 to 20, but now it's in the 30,000s of, of dollars. And with the next agenda item coming out, I mean, it could be substantial.
You could increase that.
Here, go up 50%, and then it might be 45 or 50,000.
Yeah.
So we want somebody pretty, we totally, we have confidence in returning how that money's gonna be spent.
Now, that's the Board of Alderman. Well, I should say, Board of Alderman, again, does the overall. Yes, you have people on there that are gonna make decisions. We're gonna take a budget to them, and then you're gonna see what that budget is.
So we do, we have final approval on the?
Yep.
We approve the budget.
You approve the total amount, and we will have numbers for you that TTC has approved. So we're looking at taking marketing, um, the, the overall marketing plan, a portion of that that they'll help pay for, uh, the individual marketing that they're allowing groups and organizations come in and, and ask for, uh, rack cards, the, there's a yearly payment for rack card maintenance and for purchasing the rack cards themselves. And I think there's maybe one other line item, and that's it. But that is, you know, they, they have the ultimate say. The board can say, we're not gonna fund it fully, but you can't say what that money, that you don't want to spend here, you want to spend here, that, that you don't have that ability to do.
Typically, Aaron brings in, uh, a, a marketing plan, uh, and now we have a, we've paid for a, a marketing plan, um, so Aaron will present that to the TTC, they'll approve or modify, um, and it should fit with inside the budget that was, um, approved in October for the tourism department.
We have, we have a meeting next Tuesday, and that's what we're gonna discuss, is the budget.
Some of the general concern in there would be with a tourism-funded account, that the city's not dumping expenses unrelated to tourism in there to use up that money, that it, there's enough control that the money that comes in there really is spent on tourism.
Has to be. I mean, by, by state statute, it has to be.
By state statute, you could use your judge.
Yeah, I mean, then, yeah. So the, you know, the audit, when the audit come, when the auditors come in, that's one of the things they look for.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So do we need a motion and a vote on that?
I just need to know, no, because it has to come back, as a, either ordinance or resolution.
So just kind of a draw poll here, just thoughts? Everybody okay with making that adjustment?
I don't hear anything negative, so.
Okay. Okay, great.
Moving forward.
All right, and then we'll, we'll, uh, go to the second part here, which is item number three, and this is, uh, a potential increase to the transient hotel motel tax from 2% to 3%, um, and this would be for the promotion of tourism. So they are related. Sorry to cut you off there.
Oh, you're fine.
And I just wanted to kind of separate them, because they are listed separately on the agenda. So we can, uh, we can now skip down to, uh, item number two there on that, on your paperwork.
So is there a timing thing that that they're looking at, that has to be on the November ballot, or?
That was a discussion at the tourism meeting, and that's, they agreed to bring to the board to request that we put it on the November ballot.
I'm just worried about that the ballot's gonna get, uh, misunderstood and not, you know, asking for too many things all at once and stuff with it being a national election. Uh, that's my concern, I?
And proposition S.
Right.
The previous election.
Right, so probably, yeah, that's August, this is November.
This is November.
Right. We have to get it to the county by the end of August, so that we can have it on the November, uh, ballot.
Right.
That's what we're, we're?
A city ballot or a?
It's gonna be a city ballot, just the city.
Both of those would be city.
But the county would be running one potentially as well.
Mm-hmm.
Correct, yeah.
So they would almost be in tandem for the same thing?
Same percentage.
Theirs would be 1%.
They, they have zero, and they would be going to one.
Well, that, that's all they can do, right?
Yeah. We would be changing ours, and I would, um, I don't think there's a statute on that. I, I would propose tonight that we change it to 4%. We'll get to that when we, when we come around, but just so we understand, this will be for a November? But just so we understand, this will be for a November ballot initiative. This is for a transient bed tax that doesn't get taxed to locals. If we're successful with Proposition S, if we can show that we can educate the voters what it's about, I think this is an easy one to show. We are behind the times with what other surrounding communities and counties are doing. We need to give Erin the tools to market and develop the tourism component here in the city and hopefully the county. Hopefully, it also passes at the county level. And so without trying to take general funds into, over into the tourism budget, this is an area where I think the whole country is very comfortable knowing that they're there. Maybe they're not comfortable paying, but if you visit any community, if you go any hotel, you're gonna get a, there's very few places. So I don't know if there's any other initiatives on the November ballot yet. I think that Proposition S is very important in August. But for this, to have both of these at the county and the city level, I think we'll get that extra support from the county entities that are gonna support it and to educate the St. Genevieve voters that this is not. 99% of these taxes are gonna be collected from out of town people, out of county people. Very seldom do you stay in a hotel or Airbnb in your own county, right? Might be a rare occasion where you might stay. But that, you know, technically not you, unless you're paying the bill for them, you know, but, yeah. So I think it's, I think it should be from, the city should go from 2% to 4%. And I think we should push really hard so that it passes at the county level from 0 to institute at 1%. If you look at the numbers, typically, we're raising about 80-something thousand dollars for the 30-something entities that we have here in the city. Sues Weis says about 30 entities that pay into this bed tax, and it generates about 30, $35,000 a year at that 2% level. So if we would bump it to 4%, it would roughly generate another $35,000. So that would increase Erin's budget, that double that amount from 30, 35 to 65, 70. Same thing with the, at the county level, they have a, Sue Wool, who's kind of trying to do some research, and she thinks there's about 30 entities in the county. Some have multiple places to stay, four tiny houses. Some are just a small, single-family Airbnb. But they're about 30 entities, and we're estimating that the same amount of tax would be collected in the county. So that would be, would just, and that we can only start at 1% at the county level. So that would generate maybe 15,000, give or take, at the county level. Today, the discussion with the county commissioners said they would happily sign an intergovernmental agreement to transfer those funds and make, appoint St. Genevieve City as their tourism marketing entity, because they have to spend that tax that's collected on tourism marketing. So they would just assign that tax over to us to spend in our budget for them on their behalf. So if both would pass from 2 to 4 at the city level and at the county 0 to 1, you generate roughly 40, something thousand, maybe $50,000. It's, it's really not very much, but it's getting Erin to the point where he can do something. We've struggled with this, and it doesn't come out of the general funds, right? This is a tax passed on to out-of-city, out-of-county visitors, and it's something that is sorely needed. Erin just doesn't have the budget to really market. And right now, he's really hamstringing, because he can really only try to market for the city, because the county really doesn't pay, and they pay that $5,000 small amount. But so occasionally, we try to include some wineries or Bloomshead Fun Farm, you know, but that kind of sets city business owners, because they're paying in the tax and they're generating, you know, and so it's really tough for Erin to try to co-market the county too much without them participating with some type of funds. They don't have the general funds. So this is kind of their way to at least participate at a higher level with the institution of that bed tax at 1% to start there. And again, the last thing I'll say on it, Perryville is at 6% countywide. They have twice the budget they have, and they've been involved with it a lot longer. And they, if you look by chance at some of the marketing that they're doing, their social media, their print, their rack cards, their billboards, their, you know, radio, I mean, they're just, they're, they're making everything that they have down there, they're making it look even better, you know. And I want to give Erin those tools that he can make St. Gene City and St. Gene County shine and bring the visitors here and suck up their tourism dollars, you know.
Do you have any other comparison data besides Perry County in terms of what the average?
Actually, yeah.
Rural Missouri.
So you'll get a copy of this soon. I don't know, David Bova is gonna be sending this out. Is it in a?
Yeah, it's in your email.
Okay, I didn't know when it was, so, and it talks about it. I don't exactly remember which page, but it shows counties and states what they're funding, and it'll show like the amount of sales tax dollars, tourism budget funding, and there's some in here. I won't be able to find it fast enough to answer, but yeah. And if you look at St. Gene County, we're, I think the lowest, if I remember the ones that they use for examples. So.
On the picture is Dallas, three times, right?
Right up. So did they ever fix the problem with like the Airbnb and all those other websites where the bed and breakfast and the short-term rentals were getting assessed that tax? I know for a long time, the Airbnbs were not paying a lodging tax because the systems weren't set up to collect them.
Systems still aren't set up. It has to be the individuals that pay it.
You can, I think you can partner with Airbnb to, you can submit your, your language, your tax language to them, and they will automatically assess it as part of the stay. At least, that's what I've noticed in booking in other areas. Not necessarily local to Missouri, but the one that comes to mind would be like Nashville. That's an auto, it's automatically part of your bill when you book your stay, is the tax.
Have Airbnb advertising your facility, your unit. You signed up with them, and all of their advertising inherent, is that they make you pay state local tax?
My understanding is that the individual is, is the one that's paying that, though, correct?
Yep. Because we don't have an agreement with Airbnb or VRBO or any of the others platforms to collect.
We can do that. There's a, there's a mechanism for that.
There's a mechanism, but it's been, prior to my being here, getting here, it was a difficult process.
Okay, yeah.
But I understand if I've got my local Airbnb, single little one-room operation, and somebody books through Airbnb and it's $100 a night, the taxes are, how are the taxes collected? 10% state tax and 2% tax?
I believe the state is collecting, the local has to be paid by the Airbnb owner.
Yes, okay. So we rely on their goodwill to tell us how much business they had and what their 2% is.
So we do some checking on Airbnb to see what's available and open out there, because we can recognize them, but it's spot checking.
To see if you got a bill from them, it should say 2% city tax.
Correct.
Should be on every bill. And if you get a bill that just has a 10% Missouri tax, then it's their goodwill to say, you know.
Right.
So we, I think that's something we should, that's 40 of them operating now.
Yeah.
Now, some sign that it's working is that our revenues have been going up, even though the number, the microtels about the same size and the bed and breakfasts are the same. The growth in the, what's been collected, we attribute to Airbnb.
Right.
So we have some confidence.
And additional stays and all of them, right?
Well, and you've approved those Airbnbs, so we have that on record. So if we don't receive anything, we then follow up and say, you know, don't forget your responsibility.
So are we approving a 2% to 3% or a 2% to 4%?
I would make, I would, I would make a motion to amend that, a 2% to 4%.
A 100% tax increase?
Yes.
When was the last time you had a tax up 100%? You're probably up 100%?
I don't know off the top of my head, I'll run a tape.
I just think it's a big jump to go up 100% in taxes on anything.
So my, my response to that is the tourists come to town and use our resources and take advantage of our resources and our amenities and the things that they're here to see, and they're not paying their fair share at 2%. That we have to recover some of the things that we do to provide the amenities and the attractions that they have here, and that they don't pay property taxes, they don't pay personal property taxes. They pay, you know, some sales tax when they buy things, and to include a lodging tax when they come and take advantage of our amenities and our features.
So in our previous discussions with hotels, when we looked at raising a tourism tax, there didn't seem to be a backlash after the tax went up. Because, again, most people don't realize it, or they pay it everywhere, so it doesn't seem as out of place.
Most people, when they book, ask, and what will that be with taxes? They ask the room rate, what will be after taxes? You don't get something for nothing, that increasing taxes has potential at some point, it's somebody saying that's too much.
So we're limited, by statute, we're limited to 5%. So we're still within the range that the state allows the city to have a tourism tax.
Perryville got to 6%.
Perryville has a separate state statute, which many communities have.
Class of county that they are. There are different class of counties, so the different state statutes. When they first started some of the first lodging taxes in the state, they instituted them, and to get the rest of the people in the state to vote for them, the other reps and senators, they excluded vast majority. So if they just wanted to start in Kansas City, it said that this would apply very specifically the way they wrote it. It would just apply to Kansas City or the county. And so each time that they have these lodging taxes, they're very specific, and Perryville's written slightly different because of the way that Perryville is set up. So they're allowed to go up to 6. I know they can at least do 6, I don't know if they can go hot, I don't know that. Apparently, they can go to at least 6% in Perrytown. We're only allowed 5% because of what the characteristics of our county are not set up. I'd like to make a motion to amend the bed tax increase from 2% to 4%. Put on the November ballot.
So what you would like for me to do is bring back an ordinance that will put this up on the ballot, is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
At 4%.
If we vote on this tonight, I mean, is that?
It's not gonna be set until we bring it back.
I would like to see what's in the email that I haven't seen in terms of comparing other counties, other cities, our taxes, before we think about going from 2% to 4%. Not that one, I go to 5, and I'll have to do it again.
Yeah, so the, so my issue can be, just to kind of lay out the groundwork, if we don't bring it on the 24th, then we'll have to read it twice in August to make sure that we have time to process the paperwork and get it to the county before the 27th. I think it's the 25th? I'm not sure what our second meeting is.
I believe it was August 27th was the filing day.
That's the filing day, I think our.
We have the 22nd, 8th and the 22nd are our two scheduled meetings.
So if everybody's okay with that, we can hold it back a meeting, and then, but I would like to read it twice so we have time to process it and get it to the county. Twice in the same year.
Is it Missouri process that, something like this, a city matter has to be voted on, a change in the tax rate by 2% to 3%? Has to be voted on by the citizen. I'm wondering, like in St. Louis, is that on the ballot in, that St. Louis residents have to vote for an increase in the hotel tax?
Yeah. So it's Hancock Amendment, anytime there's a tax increase request.
In the state of Missouri.
State of Missouri, right. Yeah, courts can't just make a change and ask you to.
Everybody okay with that amendment? Take some time to see what everybody else is doing, and then we'll, do we want to bring it on the 24th when we?
Yeah, we can read it once and then save it till August.
Okay.
Yeah, I just like.
Okay. The budget would obviously take, it'd be a pretty big shot in the arm to the budget.
Yeah, to a small budget, it would get.
Well, and we could see more content like what Erin shared with us tonight. So we'll be all in favor of that. Okay. Any other business to discuss tonight? I will just throw out there to the, to the council that last week, David Bova represented the school district, and I represented the city. We had a sit-down with a representative from Mississippi Lime, kind of talked through some lingering issues. And we kind of cleared the air, and it was, I thought it was a very productive meeting. I thought that the tone of the meeting was great. Matt Hayes is the, kind of the plant operations there now. Some of the information that we shared with him, he wasn't really aware of. So, you know, we, we didn't really come at him, I guess, but we, we did, you know, really kind of share our thoughts about how things have kind of played out over the last year, year and a half or so. And it was a productive meeting, and they're gonna get back to us after he has some discussions with his team. We shared a lot of the city concerns, and then David shared some of the school district's concerns. So we're waiting to hear back from them, and we're hopefully gonna have another meeting in August. Just to give you all an update on where we stand there.
So did it, was it appealing that that was a decision made on the local level, or?
No. I don't think that that decision was made on the local level, or at the local level at all. Just judging by the conversation. And they've had a lot of turnover within their administrative team, executive team there locally and corporate. So I think that has also, some of the miscommunication maybe can be attributed to that. But we'll say the ball's in their court, and we're waiting to hear from them now, so. Okay. Anything else tonight? All right, well, we will see everybody here on the 24th, and we will adjourn.